The whole meeting, February 4th, this time is 6:01. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Creddy.
Here.
Mr. Garen.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Mayoreno.
Okay. First up is, if you would all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, next up on the agenda is public comment. We do not have any early entries. Do we have any last minute partakers? If not, we'll move on. Okay, next is item four, revision and adoption of the agenda. I move to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. We have a second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Bring us to number five, curriculum instruction. Mr. Garen.
Thank you very much. Number five, point one, the 2020, 2021 calendar amendment to the law.
As you know, we've had a few of these. We're in a very fluid year, but we are recommending a revision to the school calendar to switch some student attendance days and some institute days based on our recent developments with the vaccine clinic. One of the things we wanted to make sure that we were able to do if possible was to not impact the number of in-person days for our students, especially since we were just able to get them back in. You know, we had the snow day we couldn't do anything about last, last week, but as we were looking at options and how the clinic fell, we have an institute day coming up after our long weekend. And that Thursday is our day for the clinic. And so what we're doing is we're recommending that we flip-flop that Thursday, February 11th, taking that student attendance day and moving it to our institute day and then moving our institute day, again, just flip-flopping those things. So students, it is a change for students and families, but it would not be a change in the number of days or when they are coming in person, A or B kind of a thing for our secondary. And then looking at doing that again with our institute day from April to our second clinic day, which would be March 11th. Again, as we worked with the county, we weren't aware of what those days were. We are extremely excited that that is coming to fruition and is going to be next week. And we do understand it's kind of short notice for our families. One of the things that we do want to make sure that we would communicate is if families were, had planned something that, where they would be out of town, we understand that. I know that there are certain things with attendance and the number of how many you can be absent and all those kinds of things in the handbook. With this change, that would be something that we would absolutely understand for those people who could not make, you know, other arrangements or changes there. That's also that April 5th, because that's after spring break. And so that would be a student attendance day later. We want to make sure families understand that we, we don't want them to make changes that they've already put in place. But we were extremely excited that this opportunity allows us to, again, not decrease the number of in-person learning days. It doesn't create a, canceling a day now and then putting it on to the end of the, the school year. We didn't want to have to do that. And it also wouldn't be an asynchronous or a remote day. We've heard that those challenges, we just got kids back in there, super excited to be there and did not want to add that. So at this time, that's what we're recommending. We feel it's kind of a good balance for our students and the ability to be able to do this for our staff and the community. Kind of a win-win there. Any questions with what we're proposing? Or concerns?
I have none. Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, just a quick one. So the number of A and B days is unchanged.
So what we looked at, we were kind of looking at those, we also took into account the snow day. And we're not outlining that. Schools will be balancing that out, I believe. Dan and Dr. are working on those, that communication that will kind of spell that out for families. We'll have some shifts there, which would be like next week, at the secondary level, Wednesdays is a remote day. We are going to have that as an in-person day. So Monday would be in-person, Tuesday would be in-person, Wednesday would also be an in-person. So those are changes for our families, but again, it gets them in there and that would be a B day. It balances things out that we are aware of right now. Hopefully, we won't have other, you know, days that are impacted with inclement weather or whatnot. But it does balance that out. And we as a district and the schools just really need to communicate that out because it is a change. It's kind of like, oh, wait, is this week Wednesday or is this week? And we will do our best to communicate that out on a, a weekly basis in reminding kids and families what those days do look like.
Right. Thank you.
Maybe just one other question or just clarification, just kind of what's driving the change is these vaccination clinics. If you can, just give an overview of what that is and what that looks like.
Sure. Do you want to take it or do you want me to? Well, as you know, Dr. Rowe and the superintendents have been working very, very closely with the county health department to be able to look at how we can support this endeavor in getting anybody who was interested in the vaccination done on a, on a timely manner. And so one of the things that the superintendents proposed was to do these pods or point of distribution. So there are going to be two in the district where one in Woodstock is the second one. And kind of splitting out the school districts, both the private and public school districts, and balance that pretty well. I know that Dr. Rowe has had many, many conversations along with the other superintendents. And he and Dr. Moon from Woodstock have, have really taken a lead in this endeavor with the health department. So what that would be is those individuals for, in 1B who are interested. We've surveyed our staff. We've got the intent. All the districts have done that and know what our numbers are, who is interested in getting the vaccination. So now it's kind of go time, setting that all up, what that would look like. It is going to take a large number of volunteers and staff members from all of the county school districts. We are managing that and kind of gathering those from each of the different areas. We're still kind of fine tuning those pieces there, but it is, it's been a beautiful partnership to see how everybody is coming together as, as county school districts to be able to do this for our staff, to help support getting kids back into the, you know, the buildings and, and we're, we're going to be ready to go. I know that, Dr., you probably have some other ins and outs of things that are going on.
What we're building is, is the ability to help the, the health department expand their, I guess, their expedite and broaden their ability to vaccinate in the area. Over the course of two days, we're vaccinating 6,800 educators, 3,510 comes through our facility in a two-day period. 180 vaccinations per hour over a three, 12-hour period. So it's a heavy lift. And we believe, in talking with other superintendent educators in the area, our two pods, as well as Round Lake and Stevens Center of LaRice, State of Illinois, that have taken place. It's, it's great for we to be able to work together with, with our educators. There's a process going. This is, this is good stuff in the, in the right direction to be ready for our next step down the road.
Great. Very, very exciting stuff. I mean, it's, I need to encourage something, something, something to see. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so you're looking for approval?
So, it's, we kind of like the snow day. We'll approve that that day happened afterwards. So we'll, we'll move this on if you're willing to to the regular committee, a regular board meeting in a couple of weeks, at which time it will be approved. But as long as we get the okay from you now, we can go ahead and move forward with that next week then.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll move on to, uh, item number six, the finance.
Okay. First item up is item one, fables. Any questions, comments, concerns on the fables as outlined? If there are none, we'll move on to number two, monthly fiscal updates. Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. Just a few things to note in the monthly fiscal updates. We are still waiting for ISB to release information on the next round of CARES-ESR funding that we did talk about at the last board meeting. So stay tuned there. If we do hear anything, we will certainly let the board know. Also during the month, at the, actually, at the end of the previous month, we did file our FEMA claim. And the, the claim approximated about $620,000 worth of what we feel may be eligible expenses. But what we're hearing through other school districts across the state that have applied for FEMA, many of those districts were just, were simply receiving a carte blanche. We're not funding anything. And so they have to go back and they have to go back. And there's no guarantee we're going to receive funding, but we're doing everything we can, working with a FEMA consultant, to make sure that the application and everything that we are putting in that application for reimbursement gives us the best chance of reimbursement. So stay tuned on that. We're not sure, you know, if, if we're going to hear back in a week or a month. But we're continuing, by the way, we only filed claims through the middle of September. So everything from March through September 15th, we will have a second round of, of funding that we include as an additional application. So did want to make the board aware of that, that we did do that. And we're continuing to fight for every dollar. Also, at, at this time last year, you may recall, we were entertaining a bus bid. And so we are moving forward this year with another bus bid. And then talking with the transportation folks and the maintenance folks that we have regarding our propane buses, the buses are, are working wonderfully. And so we are wanting to consider, again, doing an alternate bid, looking at both regular, obviously, diesel buses as well as propane. That said, we'll probably go down the propane route. We did hear some good news during the month, and I need to validate this, but there, there is a DARA claim. It's a diesel reduction grant that was available to us last year. But what we learned last year was, and the grant is up to $25,000 per diesel bus that you take out of service. But last year, the bus had to be greater than like 12 or 13 years old. In other words, you had to, you had to pull out of service a bus that was, you know, 13 years old. And all the buses that we ended up pulling out of service last year, when we purchased the 14 propane buses, were only about 10 or 11 years old. This year, the DARA grant came out, and nowhere in the grant does it state anything about the age of the diesel bus. In fact, on the flip side, it says it really doesn't matter about the age as long as you as an organization have owned that bus for two or three years. Well, we've got a lot of those. And so we're hoping, we're hoping to receive some rebates as a result of going propane this year based on the diesel turn-ins that we do this year. So we will be working with whoever the bid award winner is. We will be working with them on that grant and to make sure that those diesel buses are set aside and literally taken out of service. They actually drill holes in the, in the engine so that bus can never be used, that diesel engine can never be used again. So stay tuned on the bus bid and moving forward on that. The only other thing I will note is the FY '22 budget and five-year plan. We will presenting the first draft of that to the board at the March committee meeting. So stay tuned for that. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from committee or others? Okay. Thank you. Next would be item number three, revenue and expenditures report. Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. The revenue and expenditure report, you have the December 2020 financial executive summary in front of you. And we continue to track favorably to budget, again, primarily driven by furloughed employees and the reduction of certain line items as a result of the pandemic offset, offset by a lot of other line items that had increases in expenses as a result of this pandemic. But overall, we are running favorably to budget. On the revenue side, you know, from property taxes to many of our revenue line items, we are running consistent with prior year with the exception of there's two line items, and we've talked about these in the past, but I'll highlight them again, is building rentals as well as Medicaid reimbursement. Those two line items, we anticipate that, you know, at year end, June 30th, we will be falling significantly short of budget because of the pandemic. So we do have a few line items, one in particular, which is the national school lunch revenue line item that we will run significantly favorable on because of the new feeding program. Great news there with kids coming back, which is, which is fantastic. You know, pre the kids coming back from a food services perspective, we were serving approximately 1,600 lunches and 1,600 breakfasts on a daily basis, so 3,200 total. With the kids coming back, we're currently serving at the elementary approximately 70% of the kids that are in here at, for elementary are receiving and taking home a breakfast and a lunch every day, every day they're here. At the middle school and, and high school, it's, it's a little less, it's a lot less. But overall, we are looking at about 3,500 total lunches being served and about 3,000 breakfasts being served every day, which is awesome, which is way, way above where we were previous to the kids coming back. So we're serving more, more kids lunch, which you would expect. So that's good news. And that will certainly drive that line item up to cover our food services costs, which we'll need because our whole food services, food services staff is back and in the buildings creating those breakfasts and those lunches for our students on a daily basis. What else can I talk about? Health insurance. So if you've looked at the last three or four months' worth of health insurance claims, you're starting to see an uptick, a trend to get back to kind of where we were pre-pandemic. And December is no exception. December 2020, our total claims increased from 676,000 to 813,000 in December. So there is an uptick there. But there's more bad news, unfortunately. In January, okay, here we are, first week of February, we do have the January claims are in. January total claims are 962,000, almost a million dollars in claims. That is the highest claim month we have ever had. The last time we were that close was May of 2019, and we had 901,000 in total claims. We're starting to analyze those claims with Blue Cross, Blue Shield. But what I can tell you is there, there's a lot of large claims that make up the 962,000. 14 of those claims are over 10,000. And of the 14, eight are over 25,000. And of the eight, four are over 50,000. And of the four, one is over 100,000. To give you a range of, of the types of claims we are seeing. So we're trying to gather a little more information on that to understand if those are ongoing claims, one-time claims, or, you know, knock on wood, you know, a COVID hospitalization or one thing, something like that could drive that up as well. So we're looking into that to understand if it's a blip or if it's going to be a consistent trend that we can anticipate. Other than that, we continue to run favorable budget. And things are looking, still looking pretty good. I would happy to answer any questions you may have.
On the health claim number, is if you look back over like the trailing six or seven months, let's say, is it kind of normalized to be average? If you kind of assumed it's a, a timing shift versus a dollar shift?
Yeah, I, I, yes, I, I have think it's, it started to normalize in that now that people are out and about. More people are comfortable going to doctors' offices, right? Doctors' offices are open. So from the period of March, right through even September, claims were significantly down versus the averages of the prior two years. But since that time, since the beginning of September, really, we have started to see kind of a gradual uptick to get back to where we were, well, where we were before the pandemic. Yeah.
So if you did like something like, say, March through January, this trailing March through January compared to the prior March through January, would you be somewhat in the same neighborhood?
I would have to analyze that specifically, but I could certainly look at that and kind of trend that out over various time periods.
Okay.
Yeah. And I could share that with the board.
Any other questions from committee or others? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude the finance committee and move on to item seven, human resources. One item on new agenda, HR update. Dr. Zier.
Good evening. Just a typical HR update. And we do have some deadlines here in the update, though, that we need to be made aware of. As we come into the spring, as we look at non-renewals or reduction in forces, Illinois school code there at the bottom has those days out that we need to make those things happen. Those traditionally take place at the March board meeting and our notifications take place if they were to occur. So just wanted to make the board aware of that. They may see some March board items in order to meet that deadline. And definitely you will see the coaches that we non-renew every year on an annual basis that comes across on the report. So just a heads up on that. I also did get some numbers. I didn't put them on here, but I'd like to share them with you. As you know, we have a new incentive in the HEA contract this year that covers our employees when it comes to health insurance and for their participation in a health screening that we hold in October. And they receive an incentive, a discount essentially, $25 a month on their health insurance premium if they complete the blood screening through CHC Wellbeing and if they also turn in their annual physical. So we had some great data come back on the health screening of the people, they had to be on the plan in October to participate in the health screening. We had 657 people complete the health screening. So that was 78%. We've kind of set an internal goal of 80%. So considering, you know, the pandemic and everything, that, that, I think that ended up being pretty good. We'll see what that looks like next year. And then to get the incentive, you have to do the screening and you also had to turn your physical in. We have 467 employees who are participating in the incentive, or I should say, took advantage of the incentive. So with that health screening, this is the fourth year that we've done it. So just to give you some trend data on that, the first year that we did it, so there were 267 participants. Then it went up to 298, 402, and now we're at 657. So obviously driven by the incentive. But I always get that call, all four years, got it this year. Thanks for providing this. Something was found. I got to my doctor and we're now managing it. So it's to my doctor, and we're now managing it. So it's, and as Mark and I look at that, you know, that's just the personal call I get at the end of the day. I know there's other stories out there like that. So this has been very beneficial. This was also the first year we held it in every single building and including district office. We've split some buildings in the past, but very convenient for folks. They could also do it off-site facility, Crystal Lake, over here at Northwestern also. So pretty successful this year, I would say. So we're happy that, you know, folks are taking control of their health and getting this done. And then when we hit our six-month period coming up here, we'll send information out. They can also get a free follow-up blood draw if they would choose to do so. We don't host that on campus, so we don't see a lot of people take advantage of that. They have to do that off-site.
Any questions from anyone? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Zier. I'll move on to building and grounds, Mr. Troy.
Thank you. Eight dot one, O and M update. Mr. Rinkowski, I'll turn it over to you for highlights.
I don't have anything to highlight this month. Be happy to answer any questions on the O and M updates.
I'm good on questions. Anybody, committee of one, two, Mr. Crady? Any questions for anybody from the board or the board? All right, good enough. Moving on to eight dot two, O and M annual report.
Thank you. This is my favorite report of the year. I'll try to keep it brief due to the weather. There's a lot of information here about O and M to let you know what we do, how we do it, how we've been performing, information on staffing levels. My favorite statistic is the, the fiscal, the fiscal piece, the expenditures of this operation maintenance department. I like to focus on the part without energy costs, which, as we know, have changed a lot. There's the twofold reasons. One is the cost of energy and one is the, the energy conservation efforts we made. So that, I don't want to skew the data on what our operating expenses are as a department and our projects list. We've, we've been fairly volatile over the history of this report and what we've invested in. And it's kind of reasonable because when we were real young, we had a lot of warranties. And as we age and get through life cycle, we increased our expenditure, and we've been tailing off lately. But overall, taking those things aside and look at what it costs us to repair and maintain the facilities, over 18 years, we've only increased our expense 12.74% total. So I think we did pretty good. There's a list of service contract information, service contract information there. For anyone that doesn't know, we, we do outsource relatively heavy versus other school districts. We chose to do that a long time ago as a school district. I don't think there's been any hitch with that as we've gone along. A lot of information on the good news on our energy conservation efforts over the years. There's information in there for you on what we do, like what kind of inspections, how many of this and that, and our productivity and our workload, work loading information. And information a little bit at the end there to tell you a little bit about the fact that we also help bringing in some, some funds to the district. We don't, we just don't spend money. Information about grants we were involved in acquiring. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the committee or the board?
I was getting a kick out of it, Steve. Being an integral part of the natural gas and electric selection and pricing on that, it's, for me, it's interesting to see how that has trended downward consistently over the, you know, long period of time, certainly in the 12 years that I've been assigned with that and working with you on that. For the, for the amount of space that we have and we've added on to over the years, it's always nice to see that that cost goes down and, and that obviously helps the bottom line. So thank you for providing such, such a great amount of detail on this. There's a ton of information to, to digest here. I don't have anything further. I just, just wanted to add those comments. Anything from the board or anybody else? Questions?
I'll just point out, we kind of echo Mr. Troy's statement and appreciation for Mr. Rinkowski and doing the work that they do. You don't notice, you look at the energy, especially in the energy conservation area, that annual cost savings, $837,000. We don't achieve those, those numbers without tremendous work and leadership that Mr. Rinkowski provides in the department and the district. So thank you for the work on this. I just say that to you. Show appreciation for you and what you do.
Thank you. I, I did want to say one thing. I'm sorry I didn't, I, I meant to say this. It isn't just me. We've got a good team. The, the people that, that we've been able to acquire and build a team over the years are, is a very solid team in our O and M department. And I'm very proud of them. And we're very capable. I think we've got somebody to take care of most, most of the things we do, and, and we do a very good job of it. And it isn't just me. I couldn't have the time to do some of the things I do if I didn't have good people behind me in my team. So their names, their positions, you know, I don't know if their names are on the list there, but Kevin Lequiste, Assistant Director, and our Campus Techs, Chris Inquari and Patrick, it's a good team and all the other people that help us.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to eight dot three, the Boiler, the Boiler makeup air unit, please.
Sorry. Capital project list for the fiscal year had Marvel Middle School Boiler Makeup Air System as a, as listed for the, for investment for the year. However, because of the fact that we've, we've been faring very well in our, in our bidding and, and knowing that we really, really, really have two more buildings to do to, to avoid these polar air vortex seasons and having freeze-ups in the building, and the fact that we received some really good aggressive numbers compared to what the engineering estimates were last year, we thought it would be wise for us to take an alternate bid for McCabean, which is our third worst area of concern with this matter, to keep us from freezing up piping in the buildings, boiler plant. And we're very happy to inform you that the numbers are, again, are very attractive. We had a lot of competition. And we've talked to the bidder, and he, he's advised us that the way this project will flow over the summer, there's a good chance fiscally that if we take the alternate bid, that there would be about at least that much revenue that would be, that would be actually expended or requested in the next fiscal year. So we can actually get ahead of fiscal year 2022 of the work that would be done in July. So we recommend to the board to award the alternate bid as well as the base bid and, and help us with that. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board or the committee?
I had one dumb question.
Yep.
What is, what is the term makeup, makeup area?
Thank you. I'd be happy to answer that. The, we have various, we have two different kinds of systems in the buildings that we need to make sure, as a very important matter of safety in our buildings, that we provide enough oxygen to the boiler room. Because the combustion in those boilers, which are consuming a lot of natural gas, require oxygen. And, you know, there doesn't, it doesn't hardly happen anymore because of a lot of safety rules in place that have developed since some tragedies a long, long time ago. But one of them is you have to prove that you have enough free airspace, they say, outside air coming into the room, to make sure that as, if we had everything sealed up on that room and we had really tight doors, those things consume so much oxygen to combust the natural gas to get that big plant of water hot and circulated into the building that we could very well deplete all the oxygen out of the room and the flame would go out. And then if for some reason the building had some little differential pressure puff and the oxygen came back in the room, and that thing would ignite again while natural gases spewing in there, you'd have a major explosion. So there's a real tight rules on how you control and how you provide how much free airspace of outdoor air that gets into that room. Some of our buildings, when they were built, most all of them, as a matter of fact, they chose to do what they call a gravity, which is just an opening in the wall of the building. And there's a big massive louver, the whole wall, that opens up. So when we had the polar vortex few years ago, it's minus 30 degrees plus the wind, and we got this whole wall of louvers open, and about a foot away from the edge of the openings, the water main for the building, and the fire sprinkler main for the building. And, you know, sometimes when it's very moderate, if it's 20 degrees out, that boiler, as it's doing this combustion, gives off so much heat that it will help sustain and keep the, the place relatively warm. But there are points in time when you get down to polar vortex, it doesn't do it. And so what these units do is they heat up the air. We're putting in a unit that, that is actually heating the air as it's bringing it in, and it's mechanically bringing it in, and just opening in the wall. It's actually got a fan in it. And it heats the air as it brings it in there to make sure, and we're setting it down to a very low temperature to where we're only getting in that range of being freezing. It's kind of counterintuitive to energy efficiency, but we do need to operate the buildings and have heat and, and water and things. So we're, that's why these things are there as a, as a major safety.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that's actually true. Cause I thought that was something completely different. I thought it actually had to do with the additional air, the outside air that we're bringing in for, you know, with our, our COVID mitigation and the things that we're doing to help that. So that's what I thought that had to do with. But I was going to ask a question with the, do the individual buildings have the ability to control the air that's coming in from the outside, or is that pre-programmed? And I got that thinking ahead to next week. We've got this cold frigid air coming in. Is that going to put strain on our heating system in the building or, you know, be counterproductive? Or can we reduce that outside frigid air that's going to be coming in as a thing?
We have, we have control systems that will, if the air gets too cold as it's coming in, it will turn, turn things off. We have things that modulate the amount of outside air if it gets down to the point where we might freeze. Sometimes they become overwhelmed. We do have strategies that we put in place when we get down to like polar vortex temperatures to where we'll, we'll, we'll try to, you know, adjust some things manually instead of let the automation system do all the work, just to help protect, to ensure that things, things continue to operate. But it is, it is a more challenging times. I know that my staff and I probably will be waking up in the middle of the night all weekend looking at the building automation system to see how things are going, you know, to be sure. But we, we've been making all the adjustments we can to make sure that those, those failures don't happen. But we'll, to make, this, this isn't the worst weather period we've had. We've had two much worse than what's forecasted. So we're not totally worried about this one.
Oh, thank you for that.
All right. Any issue with moving this forward then, Sean? Okay. So we'll go ahead and move that forward to the board. Eight dot four, the ABM contract extension, please.
Well, this is like the second viewing of the same document.
Okay.
We've talked about this last month. I didn't, I didn't hear any concerns. Phone calls come in in the last two weeks, but I welcome this opportunity to hear of more concerns. But our recommendation stands with this model to recommend award to ABM to extend their contract for additional three years.
Any good question here? Good with that? Any questions from the board? All right. If there's no objections, I'll go ahead and move, I'm good with moving it forward. Okay. We'll move it forward as is. But, and I believe that takes care of building and grounds. Like to slate it?
Okay, nine point. I don't have a whole lot. I know last time we talked about the Student Resource Officer Bill. It sounds like that's kind of been shut down and not going to move forward. I think, you know, what the most of us are looking, well, maybe not looking forward to, but the state of the state and the budget address on February 17th. And then we'll kind of find out, you know, any budget cuts or things like that. So I don't know if you had anything else or?
I don't have really anything else to add. It's part of Luda, the Luda Conference was, is going on this week. So we had the opportunity to be here from, from a state representative who talked a little bit, danced around those topics, nothing, nothing major. I did, I did attend a session today with AAS, a policy, policy rep, Noel Ellerson, who talked about the stimulus bill and what, what they're working on. Nothing definitive, but things are looking somewhat more positive in terms of what could be allocated and support the state of Illinois that ultimately would then support us and that, that cut that has been looming over our heads, but there's nothing definitive there. One of the big things that there is a strong push in Illinois right now that, that, that should make it, and it'll be a tight timeline, but we expect, expect the committee to hear President Biden's pick for, for Education Secretary maybe next week and the vote potentially later this month. And I bring that up because one of the big topics that's been circulating in Illinois that we did, received last year was a waiver on, on standardized assessments. And just to, to update you on that, we fully support a waiver of those assessments because, not because we're afraid of the accountability. We welcome the accountability. But when our focus is focused on bringing our students back in the building and increasing the number of, of days and the time that our students can be in the building, we're talking about six days of misinstruction at the elementary level and seven days of misinstruction likely at the secondary level in order to physically have our students physically present to take these state standardized assessments. And that's not, and then we have to figure out how we're going to bring in our remote students to physically be in the building and take the assessments when they're choosing not to physically be in the building. We're advocating that our, our priorities are let's increase the number of days that our students are in the building and focus on supporting them with quality instruction instead of a state assessment when we're not going to get the data until after they're gone this spring anyway. So that's the reason. Again, most importantly, not afraid of the accountability. We welcome that. But it's the, what, is it the best use of our time given the environment that we're living in? And so far, over 450 of the 860 school districts have signed a letter in Illinois saying, we believe our time is better spent addressing the problems that we're dealing with right now instead of figuring out how to test kids this year. So we'll see what happens. But the, the secretary, Pramona is going to be, play a big role in that. And the timeline could be tight in, in early March when that waiver may be passed before we start testing in early April. So.
Does that affect anything at the secondary level with like AP classes or college admissions or anything?
AP, no, because AP, the AP assessments still took place. They did, conducted them remotely last year. So that, I'm not concerned with that. And so many colleges, especially during this environment, that students have, have taken the SAT offsite or ACT offsite, or they've waived that requirement altogether. And if that were to happen, we were to, to face any situation, we'll, we'll work with our students and find ways. We've hosted them on the weekends before. And hosting one on Saturday is a whole lot different than rewriting and changing in the instructional day for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade to take their SAT and the PSATs that lead up to that, and what that, that takes to then ensure six feet of separation. And we're talking about the freshmen being the only group that can be in the building for that entire day. And what happened, the number of tractors that we need, what do we do with the rest of the kids who are ready for their in-person time? And we really value it, and it's going extremely well. We think our priority, our attention is best served elsewhere. But no, if, if anything comes up, we'll work feverishly to support our kids. But I, I don't believe that, that'll be an issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Moving on to 10, Board of Education.
Okay. Couple things on the agenda. First is the minutes. You'll all have those available for your review in the packet. If you could forward any feedback prior to the, the next board meeting, that'd be appreciated. Second item is item two, IHSA update, Dr. Roat.
All right. Thank you. So given what we have experienced this year, our athletics have been kind of on pause except for some, some early outdoor athletics. And given the fact that so much has changed in the last few weeks, I thought appropriate to, to invite Dr. Veilin and Mr. Wilson, Dr. Veilin, our high school principal, Mr. to, to invite Dr. Beal and Mr. Wilson, Dr. Beal, our high school principal, Mr. Wilson, our athletic director, to just talk about what is going on with the IHSA and what Mr. Wilson has been juggling at the high school in the last week or so. He is, I'm not sure he, the man has slumped, honestly, since IHSA said we're going to play all of our sports between now and June. So, so with that, Dr. Beal and Mr. Wilson, please take it off.
Absolutely. Thank you for, for having us. Definitely want to give you a brief overview in your package. You will see a timeline review from March twelfth all the way up until January twenty seventh, and just the major headlines. There's a lot of smaller things that have happened along the way. We didn't include that, we just wanted to give you the, the big timeline pieces. So that's there for your pleasure to read. I want to kind of speed us up to kind of where we are now, and with the support of our families, with the support of our students and coaches and the athletic department, there has definitely been a great shift that has happened. It seems like almost with the snap of a finger, where one week we don't know what's happening, or one day we don't know what's happening, and by the end of that day, we're fully running twenty-four sports in twenty-two weeks. So we've been moving very quickly. I will tell you, and, and I'm going to kick it over to Glenn Wilson here shortly, but the athletic team, everybody from Deb Gaylor, who's our secretary for athletics, our assistant athletic directors, Chris Maxiden and Matt Lambic and Brad Aney, as well as, under the leadership of Glenn, over these past few days alone have done some amazing work trying to schedule all of our teams with the contact days that we have, and sharing all of the CDC guidelines, IHSA, sorry, IHSA, IDPH, McKinney County Health Department, and all of the guidelines that we try to adhere to. We are pulling off what seems as though the impossible, but it's working, we're making it work. And I also too want to give a huge thank you to our families for being very patient with us in this transition. It has not been easy on our students, it has not been easy on our parents, but we have heard very little from our parents in terms of the transition back into the sports, and they're stepping aside to let us do what we need to do, and we appreciate that because this is a task that is very challenging, from having three levels of practices that start at three and don't end until nine-thirty every night of the week and including weekends. So, so I'm going to kick it over to, to Mr. Wilson to talk a little bit more about the specifics. Over the past couple of days, he's had several meetings with our FBC athletic directors, the FBC principals, our conference principals. We will meet next week to just talk through some of the details that our ADs have worked so hard to do. So I'm going to let him talk a little bit about that. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? We appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this evening. We also appreciate your terrific support. It's always great to see you at our events and supporting our terrific student athletes and their families. As Dr. Beal indicated and Dr. Rowe, it's been a unique school, it's been a unique path for our student athletes, and we really appreciate to echo Dr. Beal and our, our families and student athletes and their patience throughout this challenging, unique schedule. As you saw in the notes, basically with winter sports, we did get through fall sports, had some great successes in addition to reconnecting our student athletes to our campus and to their, their lifestyle. But winter sports pretty much had four days before the pause. And as many of you know, we're paused for a duration that did not end until January twenty-seventh when the IHSA, in consultation with the IDPH and the governor's office, enabled our sports to come back. And as many of you know, they are tiered into low risk, medium risk, and high risk. And with that being said, our low-risk sports were immediately allowed to, to practice and resume. But the IHSA, with any of the sports mandated a seven-day practice period to get the kids back and get them in the rhythm and get their legs underneath them and all those things. And basketball for our winter sports was the only sport that was not a low risk. And if many of you know, we moved to, to phase four just in, in recent days, and basketball can not only practice now, but is enabled by moving to phase four to play games, and I'll speak to that here momentarily. In addition, the IHSA enabled because of the loss of opportunities and connection with our student athletes, they enabled, as they did in the fall, the resumption of contact day for non-winter sports. They did put a limitation because we're, we're locked indoors, and also, you know, the, the twenty-plus sports that are going to want to reconnect, understandably so, with our student athletes of three days and six hours. So then it became our task to figure out a master, master schedule of how we try and balance as best as possible, getting those reconnection opportunities reinstated with winter sports, understandably, having the first look from us to, to get their seasons back in place and their practices. So we developed, as Dr. Beal indicated, this master schedule. In some sports, as you all know, such as bowling, or in swimming that are offsite, aren't within the schedule but are part of this master plan. But in terms of our building, we have three sessions in following the IDPH and IHSA guidelines, three sessions of practice from three o'clock to five o'clock, and then we take a fifteen-minute interlude to clean equipment, get students in and outs in a, in a safe fashion through multitude of doors and entrances as best as possible to keep them separated and socially distanced. A second wave from five fifteen to seven fifteen, take another fifteen-minute break, and again socially distance and enter and exit, and I'll speak to that in a second, and then we conclude at nine-thirty. Our entry and exit process follows the IHSA where we do a scan temp. Now it's moved indoor because of weather, and we've also, I say upgraded our next phase of the scan temp, which we use a QR code. In, in the fall, we use the IHSA mandated sign-in sheet and bring a little technology to our process. We use a QR code where the students use their phone, take a, pick, they open up their, their camera, and it sends them right to the Google link for them to complete the IHSA questions. They show their coach the completion, and then they move along to practice and socially distance their equipment and bags and get ready to go and, and hopefully reconnect. So we're doing that on a regular basis minus today due to weather. Meanwhile, while we are still in real time rebuilding our schedules, for example, as Dr. Beal mentioned yesterday, having another FBC meeting to continue to rebuild our basketball schedules, our volleyball schedules, and, and all those, almost in real time, our cheer and dance schedules to, you know, reinstate those opportunities for our student athletes, while also telling our coaches and our student athletes to understand that because of this happening in real time, to continue to demonstrate the awesome flexibility and patience that you've already demonstrated and shown us. And pretty much, we are alerting our families on a almost end-of-the-week basis as to what the next week of practices looks like. The game schedule is becoming a little more solidified for our student athletes, but because of the constant addition of perhaps opportunities, we don't want to shy away from those if possible, of course, following appropriate guidelines. We've asked our coaches and families to kind of hang in with us on a week-to-week basis, and they've been terrific of understanding where we're at and what, what mountain we're trying to rebuild for, for our awesome kids. In terms of upcoming winter events, many of you know the provisions that are out there for the safety of our student athletes and, and our, in our community. I'll speak to cheer and dance first. They are virtual events at this time, and those student athletes will record their efforts and then submit, and will use technology and bring, and submit them to judges and, and have their opportunities judged in that capacity. Bowling is live. We just had our first bowling matches just yesterday and early this week with girls and boys bowling, but no spectators at this point to get up on our feet with these elements and, and give those kids the opportunities to understand or to, to redevelop their habits and, and also to keep them safe. And swimming will resume again with no spectators like, like in the fall due to many of the capacity levels of the pools that we visit and participate at. And with basketball now moving, with us moving to phase four, we are enabled to, according to the provisions from the IHSA and the IDPH, to have spectators, but in short, our conference and many other conferences have, have agreed that in order to keep them safe and continue to provide these opportunities for these kids, we will only be allowing home fans. And with that, only, only two, each student athlete, excuse me, will get basically two tickets for their family for them to attend. So we adhere to the fifty or less spectator guidelines, and we're feverishly working behind the scenes as we speak for live viewing opportunities. I just met with our assistants, assistant athletic director this afternoon before the snow arrived, where we're at with that, and excited about what we're putting together with it. For those, for those opportunities for fans to continue to watch our student athletes and staying connected, you know, with our Red Raiders. So I tried to give you a summary as to where we're at. As Dr. Rowe alluded to, we've, we've got a lot going. I could probably speak a whole lot longer for all the irons in the fire that we're tackling, but we wanted to give you a quick update as to where we're at, in particular with winter sports and, and our master plan of how we pull all this together. And one thing I want to add is for any road contest, those, those student athletes still do the scan temp check-in. We have a seating chart for our socially-distanced seating on the bus, and basically, let's take the sport of basketball. The freshmen will arrive for their, their game, and after the game, let's say it's girls' basketball, they will get on their bus and depart. Unfortunately, you know, it's a great tradition to come in and watch the varsity, but this, after that game, but at this point with the IDPH and IHSA guidelines, we want to adhere to those and, and keep everyone socially distanced and be able to play the game. So that is our synopsis from our office, and we'd be happy to try and answer questions. And sometimes, as I told our coaches throughout this trail since this past March, my answer may be, I don't know, but we'll, we'll sure as heck try and figure it out.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do you have any questions about what was presented or things you're curious about?
Hi, Mr. Wilson, thank you so much for that information. It's good to know that our kids are going to have a little bit of normality back into their lives, and I, I love that, that's, that's exciting for me. You didn't mention track and field, boys and girls track and field. Are we, or maybe you did, I didn't hear it, I apologize if I didn't. Are we hosting anything with track and field in the field though?
We are not at this time hosting any indoor events. Track and field, because of its size, there are a lot, and we're waiting for guidance from the IHSA. We, because of its size and multiplicity of events, and also the indoor provisions that exist, we, we haven't, we don't have those parts to put that together at this point. And also the, with what the calendar, with the count, with what is left in the calendar as well as another facet as to why you don't have that on, on our website, or you didn't hear me speak to that?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the update.
Anyone else? I just really had one comment after looking at this. Wow, I mean, that's a lot of, a lot of detail and a lot of logistics, just to get it all down on paper for one, not, not to mention execute it, so very much appreciated.
Well, we thank you for your terrific support for our awesome kids, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? Let's call. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bring us to item number eleven, closed session. I will make a motion to go into closed session at six fifty-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Layarino?
Yes.
Mr. Freddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Pablan?
Yes.
Good job. Hey, you know? You got a fly in there, bud?
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Pablan? Mr. Dentry?
Yes.
Good job.
Hey.
Okay. We are out of closed session. There's no action to take from closed session, so we have a roll call for back in open session.
All right. Mr. Gerson?
Here.
Mr. Dantory?
Here.
Mr. Pagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Malinde?
Yes.
Mrs. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Troy, I'm here.
Okay. At least one last item on our agenda, which is adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:47. Second for Ms. Malinde. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.